Okay. This will include a brief overview of the Applied Suicide Intervention Training, or ASSIST, and an update on current and future work. Welcome, Ms. Lost.
Thank you. First, I'd like to introduce two of my SLT members that are here to speak. We have Hila Wade and Amy Marty. So if you want to come on up?
Hello.
Hello.
Well, I'm Amy Marty, and today is my last day as a member of the DHS SLT as a new slate of officers who were installed about an hour ago. My family and I have been residents of Decatur for seventeen years. I have served on the SLT for every school my children have attended: College Heights, Western Park, Bay, Beacon Hill, and DHS. I've been witness to many transitions and changes in our district. Examples include: Should the infant classes remain at College Heights? Should College Heights remain open? Should we open Westchester? What are we going to do about our growing population? Our teachers are underpaid. Our superintendent left. We got a new one. Having another serving. I've been on numerous hiring committees, more than I can count. Dr. Furman, I was even on the committee that interviewed you when you interviewed for the principal position at Beacon.
Oh, yeah.
None of the challenges, obstacles, and questions that I have encountered have been more important than the inequity issues our community and our district are facing. To that end, I wanted to highlight just a few initiatives that the high school SLT has been actively working towards. Decreasing chronic absenteeism and tardies. Reducing disproportionate referrals. Providing equitable access to effective teachers. Recruiting and retaining a diverse teaching force. And embedding cultural competence in school practice. I'd like to recognize four teachers and administrators that I've had the opportunity to learn from on the DHS SLT. Sandra Black. She consistently pushes us to look through the equity lens, and I am forever grateful and impacted by her very strong voice. Ashton Melton has been an asset as a link between the district administrative offices and the SLT. Julie Wayne is one of the most enthusiastic professional administrators that I have ever encountered. He is a true asset to DHS. And Principal Lostren, whose patience, thoughtfulness, and willingness to hear our feedback is much appreciated. Please know that you are all better together. This great city of ours that's invested in our schools and our students and our citizens should expect that the school board is a team who understands their mission and who can meet challenges without divisiveness. During your work sessions, we expect you to have difficult conversations. We expect many voices to be heard. We expect debate among you. We expect you to disagree. We also expect you to come back from behind those closed doors as a unified team. With one joint voice supporting one another. It's simple. We entrust you with the task of making sure that the opportunity exists for high-quality education for each and every student in our community. Together, your collective goal for the long-term excellence of CSD can become a reality. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your energy and for the many, many late nights I know you've spent in this room. You are so very appreciated.
Thank you. So tonight, we wanted to share our school improvement plan. I realize you guys get to read it. You have them from all the schools. But I wanted just to take a moment and highlight the why and the data, because I'm not sure I've ever, in all my years of being a principal, had the opportunity to do that with the board. So being the first presenter of this SLT focus, I thought it would be a good idea. So like Amy said, tonight, we voted in Mike and Heather as our two new SLT members. So we have three goals at the high school. The first one is based on achievement data. And we have been talking about the disproportionality in achievement data, and so I am highlighting that for you. It is in our school improvement plan. These are the end-of-course tests that we give at the end of every year. So this is the Algebra I end-of-course test. And I highlighted in red for you the number of Black, non-Hispanic students and what their achievement band was on each end-of-course test. Number one, if they have achievement level of one, it is below. They are below developing. And then three and four are what we're striving for. So in my goal, we're looking at decreasing the number of Black students who have a one and increasing the number that have a three or four. This is the American Literature End-of-Course Test. Again, you can see that disproportionality. This is the Biology End-of-Course Test. And the U.S. History End-of-Course Test. So looking at all of this data, we have a goal to accelerate student learning so that we are increasing the number of students scoring a three or a four by ten percent and decreasing the number scoring a Level One by ten percent. So I will be reporting in my monthly reports to you, over time, how we're doing in order to achieve these goals. These are just some action steps. You have them in my school improvement plan. I just wanted to highlight that we're doing a lot of groundwork. We know we have to have a good foundation, and that includes common unit planning, common lesson planning, common assessment. We had our first last week and this week data talk that my instructional coaches led with every single content team at the school, having them look at a common assessment and look at how each group in their class scored. So we're really digging into this work, and we're highlighting how our students are achieving. So our second goal is about building and sustaining positive culture and climate. We give surveys across the district. This is the Georgia School Climate Survey. We also give, the next one is the Tripod DEI Survey. And what I'm looking for, I picked out questions that I thought matched our goal of making sure that every student feels like they belong in our school and that they are respected and that they have a trusting adult. So I picked these questions. In my school improvement plan, there are links to the raw data that you can look at. I just, for this presentation, wanted you to see the questions and what I'm focusing on. And these are the Tripod DEI survey questions that I've chosen as well. So I will be looking at how student perception data, how are they feeling in our building? And here are just some of the action steps. We've already done one walkthrough of every teacher in the school has had a walkthrough, and we've looked at what they're doing, where we need improvement, et cetera. And our last goal is on suspension prevention, just like Amy mentioned. This is a focus not only of the district but of DHS. So we are looking at all of our discipline. We're looking at how many of our students receive ISS and OSS for infractions. It is absolutely disproportionate, with sixty-one point seven percent of all of our discipline incidences for Black students were ISS or OSS. So we are looking with the help of the district and the District Suspension Prevention Committee on strategies to help reduce that. And here are just some action steps. My whole admin team, as well as some of our counselors, went through three days this summer of Train the Trainer and Restorative Circles. So we are now, like, we can train people on how to do this. That was a big lift for us. We also are trying really hard to think of alternative discipline outside of suspension for different things, for different infractions. And the biggest one for me is building meaningful relationships. Every student needs to have someone at school that they feel like they can trust and that they can go to. So some celebrations. If you don't know, we have homecoming coming up on the thirtieth. It is the parade and the game, and then we're having a dance on the first. So I just have here some of our, we are the elements of DHS. So we're looking at that as our theme. We are building, we have a really strong PBIS committee that is just getting stronger every year. We're hitting restart on our Equity Committee work, thanks to the commitment of the district hiring an Equity Coordinator. She is amazing and has already met with our team multiple times to get us on the right trajectory to acting. Because of some really strategic hires I did this year, we have a new instructional technology coach, if you haven't noticed. Hopefully you will soon. But we have a much bigger social media presence. Before, it was just me, and it was not really effective. So now, there's someone in charge of that who is actually working with student interns to develop content for our social media sites. So all the stuff you're seeing, if you like us on Facebook or follow us, it's all student-driven. I talked about the Restorative Circles training. If you haven't been in our building this year, we've made some really good changes, I think, that clean up our environment but also add a sense of community. We now have community bulletin boards around the school, so if there are announcements, they used to be just stuck papers all over the school. We now have strategically placed that they're using. I also purchased some large screen TVs where we have, I think there are four of them in the building now, and we have it running on a loop, all of our announcements. And there's actually a link on our website, so you can check them out as well. And on Friday, we are having a big club and activity fair, making good use of our schedule this week with our early release days so that kids can go and they can see all of the things that they can join at our school. So that is my spotlight. Do you have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now Lily is going to come up and introduce the ASSIST team.
Good evening, board chairs. Johnson Davis, board members, and Dr. Furman. As you heard earlier, September is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and this is a time for us to raise awareness of this stigmatized and often taboo topic. CSC has committed to making our community safer through its investment in the Applied Suicide Prevention Skills Training Program. And our goal is to ensure that students, families, and community members have access to the resources they need to discuss prevention, suicide prevention, and to seek help. And tonight, we'll have an overview and some highlights about the ASSIST training program presented by J.D. Dryling and Marnie Groson, one of our community partners.
Good evening. So I'm going to first talk a little bit about what ASSIST is. You've heard, it's our Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training. It's developed by Living Works. It is the world-leading evidence-based suicide intervention program. It is evidence-based. It can be used by anyone, and we teach people skills to help someone realize that they can stay safe for now. A way of lending hope, helping people to identify their own reasons to live. It is a full two-day training. It's from eight to five, both days. This is for natural helpers. It is not just for clinicians. We'll talk a little bit about the rollout that we have taken. Now that you understand what it is, let's talk about why. There is a global pandemic that exacerbated the mental health crisis in youth. October twenty twenty-one, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Children's Hospital Association joined together to declare a national state of emergency in children's mental health. December seventh, twenty twenty-one, the U.S. Surgeon General issued a new Surgeon General Advisory to highlight the urgent need to address the nation's youth mental health crisis. Twenty twenty-one, CDC Adolescent Behaviors and Experiences Survey came out. We learned that more than one in three high school students experienced poor mental health during the pandemic, and nearly half of students felt persistent sadness or hopelessness. Female students and those who identify as LGBTQ are experiencing disproportionate levels of poor mental health and suicide-related behaviors. For example, in twenty twenty-one, twelve percent of female students, more than twenty-five percent of LGB students, and seventeen percent of other or questioning students attempted suicide during the past year compared to five percent of their male peers and five percent of their heterosexual peers, respectively. Eighty-two percent of trans teenagers report suicidal thoughts, and forty percent of the CSC has taken this on as a community project, and we've come to the attention of Living Works because of it. We are providing research to them, and they are deeply invested in the way that we're doing it, because we're not just doing it in schools. We're not just doing it with clinicians. We're doing it with everybody: trash collectors, nail technicians, lawyers, accountants. Everybody is welcome to come too. We all know that suicide has impacted the CSD community. We all believe that suicide is a hundred percent preventable, and it will still happen. Mental health is a public health issue, and we're working to foster a community response to the problem. As I said, we're training natural helpers. This is not just therapists and social workers and people that you think of as the first responders. We're talking to trusted adults, people that are more likely to be first responders. For the current state of our ASSIST program, with funding, we dollars from the Madison Soapbox Derby in twenty twenty-one. We're super excited, and we're super grateful for their support. The Decatur Education Foundation has provided ongoing support through Joe's Fund, including funding ASSIST trainer certification. Georgia State University has also been a big supporter and partner from the beginning. We've done their research. Dr. Laura Shannonhouse and Dr. Robert Rice, early on, offered to train at no cost, which greatly helped us get started. That was training school counselors and other mental health professionals in the district. And we also have the Metro Resa Grant, where we got nearly five thousand dollars to bring suicide to hope to city schools in Decatur. And that's the next level. This is an intervention right now, like, real-time response, and suicide to hope is the next step. Mark for ongoing care and therapy, which views suicide as a symptom of the problem, not how it's so often treated. When we rolled out our training, first, we trained school counselors, our social workers, the school psychologists, some nurses, some administrators, and other trusted adults in some of the, in the middle school and the high school. We have since expanded to teachers and local therapists, local hospitals, first responders, businesses, and community members. This is going to increase the creation of a common language, and it makes sure that we are all a part of the solution, taking a community response to the intervention. This has given us another benefit, that helping, it helps people identify where they're stuck. This framework can be applied not just to suicide, but it can be applied to substance use. It's been applied in violent situations.
I come before the board, this is the numerous times I've been here, the first time I'm actually reading something. So it's very unusual for me. But everywhere I say is very important to me, and I hope it is to you. Suicide prevention is a personal and a professional topic that I take seriously. Over the last five years, I've come before the board numerous times, addressing the need to move along the build-out of the Student Center, which as of present is now a warm and welcoming place. At the time, one of my presiding concerns was the rising mental health needs within the CSD students. At the core, I was concerned we could have completed suicide within our CSD families. Unfortunately, over the last several years, we've lost two students, a twelfth grader and a seventh grader. I have the utmost gratitude for the support within the community, not only the supporters already mentioned earlier, but also you, the board, CSD administration, and staff. Suicide prevention is work that we'll need to continue. This work supports not only our students but also CSD staff, the board, and all community members. Suicide does not just for me. My hope with support from the board and CSD schools is to offer the opportunity for bus drivers and cafeteria and custodial staff to attend a two-day ASSIST training. Frequently, these crucial members of our community are overlooked as the helpers. They build relationships with students and staff while continuing these one-to-one relationships over several years. Currently, I'm working with the police department to see how we can offer ASSIST to crossing guards. In a nutshell, the intention isn't to have ASSIST skills stay within the CSD community as they are skilled for human kind. You can think of it as a pebble in the pond: train one and save many. Lastly, I would like to share a quick outcome demonstrated by a Decatur community member's experience after attending an ASSIST training. This individual, who I will call Jan, shared that ASSIST training experience with her friends. Weeks later, a friend reached out to Jan wanting more details, as there was concern about a mutual friend's state of mind. Jan was able to pull out the framework from ASSIST and help her friend understand how she could approach their friend. How beautiful is this? For various reasons, more than time is allotted today, I am grateful for the time you, the board, have given us to share this vital support offered to CSD and the greater Decatur community. Thank you is not enough, but it's what I have to offer at this moment. And I would like to offer, from Decatur students, high school students, maybe bracelets for Suicide Prevention Month, and they were handed out during cafeteria time, if you think they want to miss weight. We wanted to give these to you as well.
Ask if you have any questions for us.
No questions. I would like to actually plead with everyone else in this room to please sign up. This training, I took, I had the opportunity to have this training. It is fantastic training. It is accurate to call this CPR for suicide. It teaches you how to interfere and keep an individual safe in the moment until professional help can come. And it is something that anyone in this community should come and take. I'm thrilled with the work that we're doing. I'm super proud to be able to continue to support it, and I encourage, I know some of my fellow I just want the community at large to hear about this and consider putting in progress.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I am not a mental health professional, but on my day job, I see a lot of teenagers who the common theme is lack of resources, not knowing where to go or who that support person is that they can turn to. And I think this is a program, and you've got unique talent here. So I'm grateful for all the work that you're doing and the resources that you're providing for the kids in the theater. Hopefully, like you said, it's not just for our kids in the theater. Those resources you'll spread about, it's heartbreaking to have the same feeling that they'll be back the next day. I know this is not easy work. I know it pulls on your heartstrings a lot, so.
And it's for everybody. I know you mentioned, but I mean, anybody, anybody in house issues, so.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to public comment. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the public signed up?
Yes, we have, I think, nine members signed up.
Okay. So please bear with me. I have to read this at every meeting, just so that we're all on the same page about public comment. "The following information is included in the Board Policy Manual, and members of the public also acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience. The opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in before the public comment period begins, and in doing so will be asked to state their connection to CSD and/or the City of Decatur. To allow time for the board's other business, public comment will ordinarily be limited to one hour or twenty speakers. At the board's discretion, the comment period may be extended for a specified amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body and not to individual members. At the chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list complaints about specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board will not allow abusive language, threats, comments, dears, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the public will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. However, a member of the administrative team will follow up with persons speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Furman, will you please call our first speaker?
Madam Chair, our first speaker is Maggie Stern.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maggie Stern. I'm a class two thousand and twenty-four student, and I'm in the IB Diploma Program at Decatur High School. The recent changes to our IB costs for exams is unfair, inequable, and unacceptable. I decided to join the Diploma Program early last year before the decision was made, because I was on the advanced track already, and my counselor recommended this pathway to maximize my educational success in Decatur High School. The Decatur system is designed to put students into the IB Diploma Program. Dual enrollment was not presented as a viable option to me due to lack of support and an unclear process. Wouldn't it make sense to only do independent, because I would already be taking five-plus IB classes, the only additional class would be TOK? Students who are also in the advanced pathway have to take IB statistics, which forces students to either pay for the exam or miss out on potential college credit. If you want to make students fully pay for exams, you must open up other pathways such as AP or Honors. If you want to have a full IB system, you must pay for a testing. This also just a ton of people will switch to dual enrollment due to the fear of the This also just, a ton of people will switch to dual enrollment due to the fear of the pain for the cost of the testing. At the February 20, um, 2022 workshop, you said, C S D strongly desires that the fees not dissuade any students who want to pursue A P and I B coursework and assessment. But the district's hopes, streams, and strong desires to not dissuade, dissuade anyone isn't backed up by financial compensation. If you actually want to have the I B, the, I B D P program be accessible, it would cover at least a portion of the cost. It is also unclear to the I B D P program, who was, who are already in the system right now, which is such as, on the class of 2024, 2025, and 2026. It was mentioned that you will be informing current eighth graders about their decisions so that they can therefore plan for high school accordingly based off of the cost. However, that is too late for those classes, such as 2024, 25, and 26. We've already made our decisions assuming that we won't have to pay for the I B exam. If you want to implement this, I would suggest starting with the class of 2027. We needed this information earlier, that is the simple statement. If you really want to implement this, as again, you should start with class of 2027, because I did not have full consciousness of the cost when I made my class assessment. I would be going through the entire year of I B diplomas, and then when I get to my senior year, I have to pay for the costs I was not aware of when I was joining in sophomore year. Unlike most of my peers, I actually watched the two-hour board meetings, and, but this isn't realistic for everyone to take the time out of the day to filter through the extensive amount of information. Very few people actually knew the decision happened until principal Lostrin letter went out explaining. I offer you a few solutions, however, I urge you to further research this whilst including advocates from Decatur High School. First, you can make it optional, like the class of 2023, those who want to pay can pay, and, or pay for working the test, which helps limit the cost for both the school and family, or deposit system that will make the kids go to, to the exam, and I talked about this further in the case paper.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Robert Soens, my family lives at Jefferson Place, where I have been a resident since 1996. We have a son who just graduated from Decatur High, and we have a seven-year-old who is in second grade at Oakhurst Elementary. My wife teaches at Agnes Scott. We are here to ask the city schools of Decatur to make our children's health their priority when attempting to control the problem of mosquitoes on school property, and to eliminate the use of toxic pesticides on the school grounds where our children exercise and play. And at the moment, because of COVID, many of them also eat their lunch and snacks there. I want to say that we've had some very pleasant and productive conversations with the assistant principal at Oakhurst Elementary, Ms. Young, and also with our city manager, Andrea Arnold, about this issue. We are seeking to raise the awareness and share education about the recent decisions by the city of Decatur schools to treat school yards for mosquitoes, starting in August of 2021, with at least three schools per principal's request, and most recently at our son's school, Oakhurst Elementary, on September 2nd. Want to again, say that we appreciate the communication from Assistant Principal Young, and her intentional timing of that application on mosquito spray on Friday afternoon, just prior to Labor Day weekend, to add an extra day between kids getting back on the grounds. We also want to say that we're, we certainly are concerned about the prevalence of mosquitoes, and the number of students seeking nurse care and experiencing discomfort and distraction while at school, but we are looking and want to find a safer solution than these toxic chemicals. Our understanding is that the city schools of Decatur has a longstanding contract with Orkin, and that Orkin, as part of its contract, has been chosen for mosquito control. Our conversations with Orkin, and the information shared with that company indicates that the product uses a toxic synthetic insecticide with the brand name Patrol. It is a broad insecticide, highly toxic to insects beyond just mosquitoes, including pollinators and aquatic life, and it contains benzene and petroleum solvents. While its toxicity, toxicity level to humans is moderate, the data sheet shows that it's neurotoxic and bioaccumulative. Their lasting effects seem to explicitly count the school system, playground, and its grounds. Children at their young age and development stage are particularly susceptible to the harmful effects of these chemicals. Also noted, that the product is marketed as a botanical application, which is potentially intentionally misrepresentative of the fact that it is a chemical and falsely implies it to be a plant-based or organic solution. We're just proposing to work with the school system, the board, to come up with better solutions than toxic chemicals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Beth Ann Clannan, I believe.
Happy to give anybody a coffee. Good evening, and thank you for your, your service to our kids and our community. My name is Beth Ann Clannan, I'm a city of Decatur resident. My daughter is Lila Clannan, she's a seventh grader at the Friends School, and speaking to you today about my experience and my concern of a deficit within C S D to identify and provide education to children with learning differences. We pulled Lila out of C S D after discovering she had processing delays in the form of dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia. We received a 504 in November of third grade. In September of fourth grade, we asked to have her tested for learning differences. February of fourth grade, we had a meeting with the various staff to discuss testing and I E P. We were denied both due to Lila's test scores being at or just below average. They were going to have Lila meet with the counselor and modify her 504. We got caught in the pandemic, so no additional meetings happened that year, but it became so very clear that Lila was not on fourth grade reading or math level. Fifth grade was virtual, so we hired a retired educator to facilitate school three days a week. This educator told us immediately that while Lila was doing great during virtual school, she thought Lila had some learning differences and told us to have her professionally evaluated. We did. Once we had this done and received the results, we requested a meeting with the C S D school staff in attempt to secure an I E P for the now confirmed learning differences. We had that meeting in March of fifth grade. We were again told that she was testing at or just below average, and that they would modify her 504, again, to help her with executive, and also to help her with executive functioning in the future. There was no acknowledgement that she had any learning differences, which not only meant she needed to be taught differently, but would also need remediation to help her with the many skills that she had already missed. Nope, the solution was to let her get to a point, and maybe just then, maybe she might be put into special education classes. Not what we were hoping to hear, so we signed a contract with the Friends School and hired an O G tutor, tutor the very next week. We spent $5,000 for tutoring at Mathnasium in second grade, we spent $3,800 for continued math and review tutoring in third grade, we spent $4,800 for reading and math tutoring in fourth grade, we spent $6,400 for a facilitator tutor for fifth grade, we spent $3,600 on a psych ed evaluation in fifth grade, we spent $8320 for an O G tutor to teach our daughter to read. When evaluated, she was on a second grade reading level, a sixth grade. In addition, we have spent $27,000 a year for private school tuition over the past two years. For years, we struggled with Lila's attention and mood as she's thinking she was a problem child, or that we were just bad parents. Turns out, these symptoms, these were a symptom of the continuous struggle that she was having with everything school-related. She was overwhelmed and exhausted by the end of each and every day, just trying to test at, or just below average. We have spent all of the money that we have saved since birth for college to get her on grade level, and to provide her with the skills to learn and advocate for how she learns. She has lost connections with friends from the neighborhood, she's not able to participate in any kind of support that might be offered at the public schools. We feel disconnected for the community, from the community that we helped build and create. When someone leaves the school district, I ask, that you should also be asking why they're leaving, and using that data to be better for our kids and our community.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Burbridge, live in Decatur since 2011, I have three girls in the school system, eighth grade, fifth grade, seventh grade. And I am very appreciative of the fact that the word data has been brought up so much this evening, because that is something that I have been asking for, for a month now, as regards the dress coding at Beacon Hill, where I've asked, through multiple emails, including twice to the board, for the dress coding of individuals based on race and gender, specifically either official or unofficial dress coding. I have not received a reply, actually, from the board, but I've also not received any of this data. And I think if we had that, that would be a much easier way to determine whether or not the concerns that the dress coding is disproportionately impacting certain groups is valid. What we also heard tonight was the principal Lostrin showed us the Decatur, uh, data for Decatur High. And this past weekend, I had actually emailed Dr. Banks, asking for our data based on race and socioeconomic class as regards students in the A P and I B classes, because I had heard anecdotally that our students who are black, and also other students who are, and or lower income, are disproportionately underrepresented in these classes. I received, Dr. Banks very nicely asked me to, Kristen Gibbons, who is pulling it together, but we don't actually therefore have that data in existence, which I would think that, especially with our goals of really focusing on making sure that every student knows that we want them to achieve, that we would want to know where we are in the, where these students are represented in those classes, and if we are representing them. So I am asking for data for dress coding, and data for our students in I B and A P classes, because those are equity issues. I would say that the dress coding is a pretty low-hanging fruit for equity. Anecdotally, it's impacting girls, anecdotally, it's impacting black girls, and so this is one of those cases where we can see that something on paper looks neutral, but is not. And so we need to contend with that, and if we can't contend with the low-hanging equity fruit, how are we going to contend with that massive disparity that Principal Lostrin showed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Hannah Rogers.
I have lived in Decatur since 2011, two kids in the district, one graduated last year, class of 22, I also have a current junior. I wanted to speak really quickly about the dress code issue, and then talk a little bit about I B diploma and the cost. The thing about the dress code, it just makes me so unhappy, because it seems like I can't even believe we're having these conversations in this era to echo what our friends over here are saying. This is disproportionately affecting girls and people of color, it doesn't seem appropriate for our community that we're spending our time on this issue. I don't even think that the high school teachers and administrators feel that it's something they need to be involved with, and yet we're feeling like they are feeling that pressure to dress code our kids. I want to move on to talking about I B. So I B classes are not just for wealthy students, and I B classes create opportunities for students across the income spectrum. I would argue that asking families to pay for exams is creating a barrier to taking I B classes. I don't think that paying solves an equity problem, and I think it creates one where capable students don't sign up for I B classes. My partner and I both work in higher education, and we can tell first-year students who come from I B programs because they, they are better prepared and are better writers. D H S I B kids go on to excellent colleges in Georgia and beyond, and of course, other students not in the I B program also have excellent pathways. People move to city schools of Decatur for the excellent teachers, but they move here for the high school and the success that its students have. So I'd like to know what are the implications for the school if students aren't taking the exams, and will the I B organization even allow that? And how do we teach and revise the same content to students who are prepping for exams and ones who are not in those I B classes? And what is the motivation to take classes at the H L level if students aren't taking the exams? Having students in the district faculty talk a lot about their scores, to the next year, they talk about the scores that students got, which makes me think that faculty are reliant upon that data, how well their students test, and what is their, how do they manage without that feedback from the exams? And what message does it send to the students if we tell them to sign up for I B classes, and we push them to sign up for I B classes, but encourage them not to take the exams? So I'm concerned that this change, charging for the I B exams, will discourage participation, and we won't need I B classes anymore, I'm afraid it's going to change the entire landscape. I also don't like the education, the idea of paying for education. The data that was cited was actually an increase of $23,000 for I B exams since 2019, which is about 10%, which is not super egregious to me. And then I also just wanted to point out that based, I didn't talk to any I B coordinators, but based on talking to other parents, DeKalb County is still paying for I B exams at their I B schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Tricia Madden.
Hi, I'm a parent of two daughters at Decatur High School, and one son at Fave, and I'm here to share my opinion that the dress code is sexist and therefore unacceptable. I've never worked in city schools of Decatur, but I have worked for over twenty years in education, and administration. Most recently, my job is, is, has been as an Orton-Gillingham tutor specializing in dyslexia, A D H D, dysgraphia, and anxiety. I understand there are many parents here tonight who want to discuss services to help their students with learning differences. I'd like to address those parents. I am deeply sorry that this board has forced us to waste valuable time discussing belly buttons and butt cheeks, when we should be discussing your children's academic needs. It's very unclear where this dress code is coming from, because there is no research-based evidence tying torsos or chest to learning outcomes or safety. So while there are zero studies linking gross drops to test scores, there are actually thousands of studies spanning several decades that detail proven ways to better educate dyslexic students. But for now, back to this curantanical dress code. Just because you took the gender adjectives out of the dress code does not mean that you created a non-sexist dress code. Everybody knows that the enforcement of this dress code overwhelmingly targets girls. Therefore, it is a violation of basic Title IX principles. And about the data, if they're being tracked and shared, that absolutely, I second that request that that data is tracked and shared, so it's obvious that we can prove this anecdotal, anecdotal evidence that we all know to be true, that it's targeting girls, actually is happening. That is not going to account for the many cases of the teachers that just simply tell kids to cover up and don't actually dress code them. That's what numbers are, are more than the dress code. While I'm primarily concerned with the sexist messages that this dress code sends to our youth, I'm really concerned about the impact this has on our teachers. A former public school classroom teacher myself, teachers don't want to do this, they have no interest in it. Our teachers are telling our students on a regular basis that they do not want to do it, because it makes them uncomfortable, also because they're not interested in it. This is, we don't know where this is coming from, it's not coming from the teachers, it's not coming from the community. You're putting our teachers in a horrible position to examine the depth of somebody's chest, how much is showing, or their butt cheeks. You are doing this to educators that are already incredibly overburdened, incredibly overwhelmed with low morale. This is not something that is fair to them. I think the board owes these parents and our entire community, and the teachers, an apology for dragging us through this dress code nonsense, while there are far more important things to discuss about our schools, like the suicide prevention, the inequities of the I B, and dyslexia, just for a few things tonight, and we're talking about the dress code. You guys need to drop this and it's happening. You guys need to drop this and it's happening.
Thank you.
Next up, Emily Beard.
I don't know you, but we're on the same wavelength, so. Hi, my name is Emily Beard, and my husband and I have lived here since 2006. We have two kids, one of whom remains in the district as a sixth grader at Beacon Hill, and one who has no longer enrolled. I didn't plan to speak about the dress code. I can't believe I have to say this out loud in 2022 in a supposedly progressive school district where students, especially young girls, don't need to be called out for what they wear to school or being told that they're a distraction. My 12-year-old is uncomfortable in her learning environment because the adults around her are so focused on the length of her skirt and whether her classmates' bra straps are showing. It's really not okay at all to sexualize children in this way, to publicly shame them and intentionally humiliate them. And if I hear one more reference to how this policy is to ensure the safety of students, I might actually agree. Dress codes are sexist, they're sexist, they're racist, they're elitist, and they check every box against the kind of, the kind of equity that CSD purports to uphold. Dress coding contributes to rape culture where blame is conveniently shifted from the one who harms to the one who is harmed because look at what he, she, they are wearing and how could they, she, he resist? A middle school student friend said it best the other day. She just said, you know what, Drake, this dress code thing is straight up cringy. My daughter said the dress code says a whole lot more about the person that's doing the looking than it does about the person who's being seen. Esther, I'm really proud of you for recognizing that. She's 12. She saw injustice, and I'm sorry that you're having to witness that at school for the distraction it is to your learning. And I apologize frankly for sending you to a school system with this kind of a value. This administration should be ashamed for making this of all things a priority with all the issues that we are plagued with. Not sure how midriff and skirt length are what's getting everybody's attention, but that sort of tells me everything I need to know right now about the leadership and the priorities and the fact that it needs to change. Is everyone coming to school fed? Are our kids' mental health needs being attended to? Have we hired more counselors? Can everyone afford to take their APA exam? And most importantly, the reason I actually came tonight is to talk about the kids that aren't reading on grade levels. So about that. Decatur's most recent series of articles brought to light the destructive force of the school system's toxicity around identifying and serving kids with learning differences. This is not new. Going back to 2016, the Board of Education held its listening session for families advocating for dyslexic learners. The CSD leadership responded with a report acknowledging and outlining a roadmap to address these at a systemic level, and yet here we are, six years later. So as we look forward to strategic planning for the new charter and our search for a permanent superintendent, I need the board to please, please, please take steps to usher in a new approach to supporting these families, special needs learners. We have to acknowledge the brokenness of the infrastructure, the NTSS delays that go on for years. We must name the harm that has been done. It is past time for restorative practices. These are disenfranchised families. We must hear them out, conduct exit interviews, and validate the frustration. After so many public comments since April, month after month, I was hoping by now to hear a new approach from each one of you. I was hoping that we would hear the data, the lived experience, and that we would call, by calling on you, your constituents, you would be ready to give us an explicit plan for holding the superintendent and the district leaders accountable for these outcomes related to literacy. I asked a few board meetings ago for the metrics that the board would use to measure success, and I'm still waiting to hear what those are. So I'll keep coming, and I'll keep asking until somebody here can please give me an answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Elizabeth Hogan.
Hi, thank you for listening. I've spoken before this past spring regarding reading. This is an update. Again, my name is Elizabeth Hogan. I'm a teacher of 22 years, 11 in CSD at both Claremont and Glenwood Elementary. I currently work as a structured literacy trainer for Reading is Essential for All People and as a local Orton-Gillingham tutor. Today, I'm going to speak with my Orton-Gillingham tutor in Patagonia. All Decatur area OG tutors have waitlists. Luckily, I was able to graduate a fourth grader that I've had for two years this summer and take on a new client, a second-grade CSD student. After initial assessments and seeing him just four times, I had to send an email. I've had to send way too many times. The email basically reads, "Your child is so far behind, they will need extensive tutoring to ever get to grade level. Unfortunately, I don't have the necessary open spots to serve them effectively. A part is supposed to write to parents. I promised myself after I left CSD in 2016 that I would never not tell the whole truth to parents again. I have sat in too many RTI meetings, counting the same lines. They've made some progress. I think it's about to click. Let's give them some more time." None of these statements were backed by research or data, just feelings. In the same email to these parents, I asked what they had heard from their school. This was a second grader barely reading at an end-of-kindergarten level. He knew letters and sounds, but was not reading words. I thought surely he's a red flag in the classroom. His parents responded with a litany of information and email chains spanning over a year, his whole entire first grade year. They had been begging for additional support. His reading map scores were in the 60th percentile in first grade. The test is read to him. His Acadient scores were at high risk for failing. They were visibly low. To receive intervention, intervention, you have to qualify in two places. His only hope was an EIP checklist, which is a subjective tool for a ranking from his teacher. She scored him two points too high to qualify for any intervention. It gets to December. His reading map scores dropped to 36%. Acadient is still shockingly low. Parents are now begging for intervention and told he still won't qualify. By the end of first grade, this student has had a year of lighnations, arc four, and still can't read a word. Absolutely no intervention services provided, and he was never screened for dyslexia pilot. His parents got him on my waitlist this summer. They have now had to find another tutor who could see him two to three times a week after his school days at the financial tune of $600 to $700 a month. If he stays in this district, he'll most likely need intensive OG tutoring for 18 months to two years to get to grade level. He is far too behind to ever receive the interventions he needs within the confines of a school day. His parents just updated me that he's finally receiving EIP intervention this year because his math reading scores fell to 14% because now it, he, it is not read to him. As a beginning second grader and non-reader just receiving services, a full year of early intervention missed. This weight-to-fail mentality is failing our kids. This is just one example that fell into my lap in the last month. Where are all the kids that don't have parents and private tutors advocating for them? This boy will be okay because his parents knew to get outside help and have the resources to pay for them. The right to read is an equity issue. It is our equity issue in CSD. I had a great meeting with Dr. Furman this summer. I really appreciated her humility and her willingness to learn about this issue. Unfortunately, I had a much less productive meeting with the district ELA team where the tone was defensive and dismissive. I hope with the sake of Decatur's kids, we can move forward, collaborate, and get work done for a charter system and a dyslexia pilot. Surely, we can get creative around solving these problems. Lastly, I'd love to switch to my middle school mom hat. It's really disheartening to be hearing and seeing so much ridiculousness, swirling around about a dress code. Is this a ditch we're going to die in? We can't even teach our most vulnerable students to read, and we are choosing to focus on 11-year-old girls' belly button. Please, let's re-center and focus on what is truly important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Ruby Skilman, and that's our last speaker.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Ruby Skilman, and I'm a senior at Decatur High School. I've come to you today to discuss the matter of fees attached to IB and AP exams. As a participant in the IB diploma program at DHS and an IB diploma candidate, I find the announcement of students being required to pay for their fees for their exams in the upcoming years to be troubling. According to DHS Principal Rochelle Lostrin's email on Wednesday, September 7, starting in the 2023 to 2024 school year, students will be required to pay the testing fees for both AP and IB tests. While I'm not required to pay these fees because I will be sitting for these exams in the current school year, I would like to share my thoughts for the board, thoughts for the board's consideration on fees for future students. I currently take eight IB courses, including theory of knowledge. In May 2022, in May 2023, I will sit for six IB end-of-course exams. At $119 per IB test, I will be paying $714 out of pocket. For families who have multiple children taking IB and AP exams, the cost of these exams can become exorbitant. All of these exams provide an opportunity to gain college credit and even scholarships that can be vitally helpful for students choosing to further their education at a college or university. One of the points that Principal Lostrin covered in her email with financial aid is I find this to be an unsatisfactory solution to a complex problem. Students who are eligible for financial aid have parents who are working at least one job, if not two, just to pay extremely high housing costs and property taxes so they can live in the city of Decatur for their child to get a good education. Having these families fill out more forms for financial aid is just another hoop you're asking them to jump through. Additionally, my parents, much like many Decatur parents, moved to Decatur because of the reputation for excellent education. I am very grateful for the education I have received over the 13 years of being a part of city schools of Decatur. However, this education comes with extremely high living costs that people must take into consideration before moving here. Their tax dollars should be who have built this district's revenue excellence instead of covering various other expenses like Chromebooks for students or even building a track like a school. Another major point from Principal Lostrin's email was equity. While I'm a huge proponent of equity in CSD, I don't see outforcing families to foot the bill for testing fees advances that cost. I am sympathetic to CSD's concern that it has to eat exam fees for no-show students, but there are better solutions to this problem. For example, as done by Atlanta Public Schools in the past, students who qualify for free or reduced lunch only have to pay 10% of exam fees, and all other students have to pay 25% of exam fees. Furthermore, if the students do not sit for these exams at APS schools that they have signed up for, then they have to reimburse, reimburse the school district fully for those exam fees. While I understand this does not completely eliminate exam fees, it provides a compromise to a difficult problem. Thank you for your time, and please keep listening.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our community members for your comments. I will now turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman for her superintendent's comments.
Just a second, I accidentally closed my window a little bit. Good evening, welcome. So glad to see so many faces here. I want to commend DHS and Doctors Drilling, Driling, Driling, Marnie for presenting about the assist program. I know that's been so helpful for so many in our community, so thank you so much. So our several topics I'm going to touch on this evening is I'll provide an update on our strategic plan, update on the board policy revision process. I'll touch on the dress code, as well as student behavior at the DHS home opener, give the board an update on our math course progression, and update on the budget, and then discuss three task forces that are in the midst of being formed. So last Tuesday, we held our community engagement meeting, and I was thrilled to see such a strong turnout of community members in attendance to the participants through identifying strengths, areas for improvement, opportunities, and threats for CSD. It was amazing to see the wide range and plentiful amount of input provided by our community. In the coming weeks, CSD will work with GSBA to review all of the input provided from the board, from the community, and through the online survey. The input will be summarized in a report that will be used by the planning team to identify the goals that we want to achieve in the next five years. The planning team will consist of 50 individuals made up from the CSD community. Half of the team will be made up of CSD staff, and the other half will be students and community members. After the planning team meets, the information will be turned over to the action team. The action team will be, will be CSD staff. They will develop the action steps for the upcoming years that will help us achieve the goals that have been set by the planning team at that meeting. At the December board meeting, I will be sharing the goals that have been drafted by the planning team and any additional information that we have at that time regarding our strategic plan. I've shared for the past several months another initiative that is underway. This here is rewriting our board policy manual. Several years ago, the board adopted a policy manual that had used different, a different governance framework called the Carver model. Well, the Carver model is not in and of itself a bad model. It does not align with the governance structure that this board wants to follow. This means that over the course of this year, the school board will review and adopt an entirely new policy manual. I'm thrilled to be collaborating with GSBA on this project as they have a great deal of expertise on the resources to make sure that our policies are aligned with state regulations and the law. Last month, the board reviewed four new policies and made recommendations for edits. The edited policies were posted on our assembly page for public review and comment. This evening, the board will review the final revisions of those policies and vote them into approval. This evening, the board will also review another batch of policies for discussion. After the board's suggestions are added to the policies, they will be available on our assembly page for review. At the next work session, the board will begin to identify reform policies. Reform policies are policies that are designed to change the district in fundamental ways to improve student achievement and district operations. And this is just a reminder for the board, you do have homework for your next work session to read chapter six to eight in our book. All right, I do want to talk briefly about the dress code. And wanted to start, I do, I want to pull up our dress code. And this is a dress code that was developed many, many years ago. This is, has been in place unchanged for, for a while. We updated it in the time, oh, that's really small, during COVID to include some information about math. But this is a, this is a dress code that was developed by our school, by our community with inclusion of teachers. Dr. Hettleston and Mr. Thomas have reviewed the dress code annually with their Code of Conduct Committee. As they reviewed the code this past summer, there were some recommendations from several members on the team for updates to the dress code. But when Dr. Hettleston and Mr. Thomas asked what could be changed, they were not able to get any specific recommendations from the team that was reviewing the dress code. So when the dress code was revised several years ago, we did intentionally take out some gender-specific clothing items, wanted to make sure that there was flexibility for all students to be dressed in a way that they felt comfortable. And I want to point out, in no way does our code reference any type of length of shorts or skirts or even bras. It was designed to be appropriate for students in every grade level. So the code is written at a district level. The code is just written at a district level, and the school principals are empowered to enforce the other disciplinary rules and procedures. As I shared in the follow-up last Friday, Ms. Lostrin and Mr. Thomas, the principal at the high school, I reviewed their procedures for how they enforce the dress code, and I can assure you that both principals are managing these situations in a very respectful manner that minimizes loss of instructional time. It has several different areas in it, one of them being hats and hoods and bandanas. I must be hungry. Bandanas are not permitted, and this is the area of safety and security is we need to make sure that students can be easily identified. We have the ability to see students when we need to see them, and that it is just a very general dress code. And the attention to certain parts of a student's body are just one single piece of the dress code. So I did want to just kind of identify that as we talk through the dress code. So some stakeholders ask, why do we have a dress code? Why do we need it at all? Why don't we just get away with a dress code? So first and foremost, schools are charged with helping prepare students to be successful adults. And all, and all workplaces that I have heard of or know of or people that I talk to that work in industries have some type of dress policy for their employees. So at this stage in our lives, even our youngest students can learn to dress appropriately to come to school in an appropriate dress manner and get them ready for that next stage of life. The dress code also ensures that students do not wear clothes that is offensive to the rest of the student body and staff. Doing away with a dress code could open the door to students wearing clothes with drugs, alcohol, racially insensitive symbols and words on them. As a public school, we are, we must ensure that all students can come to school without being subject to advertisements for drugs and alcohol nor being submitted to racially insensitive propaganda. I am open to working with our student advisory team on reviewing and updating the dress code for students in our system. And I look forward to meeting with the advisory team as soon as we get that team finalized in the months to come. However, until those changes have been reviewed and processed, the dress code will stand as written. And I did want to take this opportunity as well to recognize and thank the student body body at Decatur High School for their improved sportsmanship at the second game last week. As many of you know, the student section during the home opener did not meet expectations that we have for student behavior in CSD. I understand getting worked up at a sporting event, this past Sunday is our major rival, the major rivalry game in my household, me being a Steelers fan, my husband being a Bengals fan. We are equally passionate about our teams, and it can get pretty loud and rowdy in our house, but we must keep good sportsmanship in mind as we cheer on our teams, especially when we're hosting a team at our house. I'm glad the students and staff have taken this as a learning opportunity and continue to work on how the student body will work together to repair the damage done to the reputation of our high school and our school system. And I did want to highlight a really short video that was completed by one of our high school teachers, Mr. Felton, because it's just adorable. I just thought that was a really great opportunity to get the students involved in helping everyone understand what this sportsmanship looks like. Okay, so I want to update the board on our math course progression. We presented some information to the board a few months ago, but I want to make sure that they are aware we did make a slight change in that. The accelerated algebra course currently holds all of Algebra I standards and three units of geometry, which is covered after the students take the Algebra EOC in March. Due to the state standards changing next year, accelerated geometry, the course students would move into after taking accelerated algebra will no longer exist. The Georgia DOE Math Department is recommending all students move into the new class Geometry Concepts and Connections in 2020-24 school year. Previously, it was presented to the board that we would allow families to choose from one of these three options. Students would take a full geometry course next year, Geometry B would be offered over the summer, Geometry B would be offered through DVA during the next school year. But after looking at the data and speaking to the math department at the Georgia Department of Education, as well as getting feedback from both the middle school and high school, we would like to propose that we no longer offer the Geometry B offered over the summer and Geometry B offered through DVA during the next school year, but have the current accelerated algebra teachers slow down the pace of this year's course to May with all other EOC assessments. This would give students a deeper understanding of the algebra and prepare them for high-level math courses in the future. This communication is for the board, just so that you are aware of these upcoming changes, and this currently affects seventy-three students at Beacon Hill and two hundred and two students at Decatur High School, and we just wanted to make sure that you know we are getting this communication out there at all of our curriculum nights and on our website as well. Last month, I shared that our finance team had identified an error in our accounting software, and since then, the finance team has been hard at work examining the numbers and have identified about seventy percent of the discrepancies, which accounts for about $2.1 million in that overstated account, in that overstated value. So several eliminated positions that were still hanging out in the budget were identified. However, a majority of the overstatement was from our healthcare and benefits account. The finance team is continuing to analyze the budget and will be providing additional updates as we go through that process. Finally, I wanted to share that we are launching three task forces in the coming weeks. The first task force will be focused on how CSD is addressing dyslexia. The Director of ELA and Social Studies, Ms. Courtney Simon, along with two district reading coaches, Dr. Carlos Zizik and Dr. Gail Hardwood, will be leading this team. They are going to be looking for teachers, parents, community members to serve on this team, as well as members from the Georgia Department of Education. This team once formed will review how CSD is implementing our dyslexia pilot, our instructional program to ensure that we're following the science of reading, along with serving as a resource for parents who need more information and resources about navigating school, navigating school once their child has been diagnosed with dyslexia. The second task force will be led by Ms. Karen Newton, the principal at Fifth Avenue Elementary. She will be reviewing CSD's The MPSS Eligibility Task Force will review our processes, assess where we need to improve, and review how our processes are implemented at each school. Task force will also review what other districts with high-quality MPSS and eligibility processes are doing. They will make recommendations on where CSD needs to improve our processes and knowledge regarding MPSS, all the way through eligibility for special education services. We will be looking for parents, teachers, school and district leaders, and members of the Department of Education to serve on this task force. The final task force will be focused on teacher burnout. The work of this task force will be led by the members of the Teacher Advisory Council. This group will be using the report published by the state on teacher burnout as their foundation to determine if the same major reasons for teacher burnout in the state are aligned with what we are seeing in CSD. They will then develop recommendations for the district on how these areas can be addressed. The timing of these task forces is key, as we are in the process of developing our strategic plan. The information gleaned from the work of these teams will be immensely important as we address how CSD will improve on these critical issues over the next five years. Any questions or comments from the board?
So, I appreciate the document shared on the dress code that we just reviewed. I have heard from numbers of parents whose kids were actually approached due to wearing leggings in the classroom, and so I was concerned about that. It looks like leggings, I just want to be clear, leggings are not in violation of the dress code.
No, leggings are fine, tights are not.
So, what concerns me is that when I was on the CSD Decatur website, when I Googled for the dress code, the first document that came up did actually say that leggings aren't to be worn as an outer layer. And I do also want to point out that it concerns me, I guess I would like a little bit more clarity from the administration on how, where we say, CSD needs to maintain a safe and orderly environment, therefore garments designed to be worn as underlayers such as long outerwear tights should not be worn as an outer, or should not be worn as an outer layer. That, I just don't understand how that is a safety question. It does feel concerning to me that that language is linked to safety, and so I would like a little bit of an explanation on how that is viewed as a safety issue.
Yeah, that's a great question. I was not involved in the writing of that policy. It was written many years ago, but I can touch base with Dr. Huddleston and Mr. Thomas and get back to you.
So can we, okay, so that, what concerns me then in that case is that we have multiple documents laying out how the dress code is supposed to be enforced. It seems, it seems self-evident to me that it would be complicated for enforcement in the classroom if there are multiple versions of the dress code available on the website, and, and, I mean, I can see how that's going to be confusing for teachers, it's going to be confusing for parents, it's going to be confusing for students. It would seem pretty obvious that we probably aren't consistently enforcing it, especially if we aren't even consistent in what we're communicating is the actual dress code, so I would like to see that at least corrected as soon as possible.
Questions? I have a couple, a couple thoughts. I think, the first thing is that, I think, most of the people who made comments about the dress policy, but I want to be on record as saying, I think we've gotten way off into the weeds with this particular policy. Some of the emails and the comments that have been directed at the board members about this particular policy are really, and Dr. Furman, are really way off, off in the weeds here, I think. I am a mom of four girls, four black girls, and I grew up in DeKalb County, I was dress coded, and I know firsthand what it feels like to have to put your fingertips to your thighs and see if your shorts were too short. It pains me to have to open my emails and someone thinks that I supported a racist policy or something that's sexist. So I think we need to regroup and think about what we're trying to accomplish here. That's the first thing. The other thing that I find interesting is that where we, over the course of this, this was not a policy that was up for review. It was not on our list of policies, which we'll get to sometime before midnight. Of all the policies that we were supposed to review, this grew out of apparent concern or community concern, and we wanted to do our due diligence and look it over and see where we could make some adjustments and see where we could support our principals and our students and where we could do the right thing. So, it would not have been the right thing to do to just say, we want to ignore it, and we don't, we're not going to waste our time with this. That would have been the wrong thing, and I want to be on record as saying that I think that would have been the wrong thing to do. So, I think that's the other thing, too. I also want to point out that we're focusing on one line of this policy and we run away with it, which is how much of your behind or how much of your belly button is showing when you walk through the school door. And I honestly, I think that's a parental decision. You agree might with what your kids wear when you walk through the door, and Dr. Furman had said what the policy will be, but ultimately, that's a parental decision. Wear what you would like. I agree might with what my kids wear when they leave the door. But, in that policy as well, it says that you are not allowed to wear clothing that is racially offensive, that is religiously offensive, it gives our Muslim sisters the ability to wear a hijab peacefully, and I was waiting for the email that was going to say, do what you want to do with your midriff, but protect that portion. Keep that portion in place, and that email never came, and that pains me. So are we here to advocate only for the policies that, that help our own kids? Or are we here to advocate for all of our, for all the kids in the community? And I sat and I thought long and hard about what I wanted to say about this, because I have four young black girls to raise, and these policies hit differently for girls of color. But do we really know what that means? And I'm not here to, I'm almost at the end of my soapbox, I promise, but these kinds of tools, these kinds of policies can be used as disciplinary tools, and that's what it means when we say that these policies are different for our African-American girls. Not that they're written differently, not that they are, that they smell differently or feel differently, but they can be used differently in the hands of a different policy holder. And I don't know if that, if that, if that point is, it sets in. But I want to be clear that I didn't take this position to put across any policy that would harm any female student. And it hurts me to think that anyone would think that. And I don't think anybody sitting up here would do that. That is not the point of this policy. We have gotten very, very myopic with one line, and that is not the point of that policy here. It is also not a policy that was up for review. It was something that people had concerns about, so the board did their due diligence to see will be, make some adjustments. So you continue to make adjustments, because that's what you do with policies. So, let us think about some portions here that are designed also to protect all of our student body. I got emails that, why are we not allowing bandanas? Yeah, I think that there was a gang violence problem. Well, bandanas are not associated with gang violence, now are they? So, I think we have to examine our own policy, what we're interpreting, how that is written, and how this can be a learning opportunity, not only for our kids, but how we're using policies like this. Thank you.
It is not a new policy. It's been there, but when it pops up, that means they're an issue. My issues I want to highlight are, one, the dress code is being sold differently by different teachers and different leggings, no leggings, tights, no tights. My sixth grader brought home the 2017 pre-amended dress code. That's a problem, because that creates mixed messages, it causes teachers to do stuff, I, midriff, whatever. Two, as a male high school teacher, my position was, I don't give a dang about the dress code. It is not my position. As a board member, that is my position as well. It's important for safety, it's important for all sorts of stuff, but I would like to make sure that it's enforced equitably. I like the data request. If you are going to that we don't have teachers telling sixth and seventh grade girls that they're dressed inappropriately because they're sexualized or anything. That rings true to me as well. So, I just want to make sure that we're communicating with the principals and the teachers, this is our dress code, this is what we would like, because the message is not
So, while I'm not opposed to a dress code, it would be disingenuous for me to not acknowledge how I witnessed dress codes as disciplined, you know, tools against black girls when I was still in the classroom, which hasn't been that long ago. And so I think to both of your points, it's important that it is applied consistently across the board, because, you know, I knew girls suspended for wearing leggings. And, you know, I've shared this before, but when I was the club sponsor of Wild Owee, and we dressed up on our meeting days, it was always an issue, first thing in the morning when the girls came in and they were told by administrators that, you know, their skirts were too short, or their blouses were cut too low, and what was really heartbreaking was that folks missed how, how good the girls felt when they were walking in the building dressed up. And so, it got so bad that I just designed and bought T-shirts for the girls myself and said, we're just going to wear T-shirts and black bottoms. And so, so, you know, I, I do recognize why we want to teach students to be professional, you know. Dr. Solton, you mentioned, you know, in every environment, we have, you know, standards of how we need to dress, you know, different employees in different environments, you know, are told, you know, how, what's appropriate and what's not appropriate to wear, and so I recognize the value in that, but it's important to me that, that we just make sure that these, you know, that this policy is applied, you know, consistently across the board with all students.
And is it, the board wished that we make sure it's applied consistently across all buildings as well? Because that's, I mean, that's probably what's, where all this started to bubble up. When we had a conversation to make sure that all buildings were enforcing the dress code, because some were not, that's where this bubbled up. So should we relax on the ones that were enforcing it, or ensure that the ones that were not start enforcing it?
Well, one, make sure that they're all enforced.
Correct.
Yeah. But that's the question you're asking, isn't it? Yeah.
It also sounds like there's some areas where you can make some wording adjustments. And I think you need to get some student feedback.
Of course, yeah.
If it sounds like there's some areas where short or shirt language could be adjusted and amended, and that might make this policy more up to date, then perhaps that's where you start, and then that might make it easier to implement across all of the communities, if that makes sense.
I mean, I think that there are two spots of this dress code that are primarily driving the issues. I mean, I would be stunned if anyone in the community would argue that we should not allow people in the schools that are wearing clothing that is culturally or religiously inappropriate, or that, you know, we're not allowing people to express their faith. I think that nobody's going to argue that we shouldn't have T-shirts that promote drugs, alcohol, violence, any that promote drugs, alcohol, violence, any number of those. So there's like large slots of this that are reasonable, that I think any reasonable parent would be comfortable with. I think the section where we talk about underlayers, like long underwear, tights and leggings, that is targeted towards women. When we talk about dress to cover your waist, torso, midriff, chest and undergarments, that is principally targeted towards women. And I think that those two sections need to be a really heavy rethink on how that's worded and how hard we go after that. This is not, I think, the hill that we need to die on.
We will work on an updated draft of the dress code and bring it to the board for review. Any other questions about my comments or topic?
I was, a quick question about the task forces.
Yes.
When will you start to solicit, you may have mentioned that.
Uh, probably the, after fall break.
Okay.
I did have a few comments on the ID assessment fees, if I could, if I could, because I wanted to, I, I, my concern is principally related to communication regarding those fees. I think that there are reasonable policies, reasonable reasons why we would have a policy to take the cost off of relatively less affluent individuals and put the cost onto relatively more affluent individuals regarding ID assessment fees. That is an equity, associated equity issue, but I, I do think that the way that it ended up being communicated and the principal number of parents found out about it is partially what is driving some of the frustration. I think it came as a surprise. And so I would like to see if we can do a little bit more concerted effort in ensuring that that's not a surprise. I mean, a couple thousand dollars is a unpleasant surprise to find out at the beginning of the school year. And I don't, I don't think it's reasonable that we expect parents to go back and watch a February work session to come up to speed with it. So if we can be better about that and, and maybe seek ways to bring parents along and, and be clear about why, I think that would go a long way to reducing some of the concerns that I'm hearing.
Understood.
Can you talk about what Karen Newton Scott's MTSS Eligibility Task Force purpose is?
Um, we, we wouldn't, we just want to make sure that we are overly careful about making sure no students fall through the cracks. So we want to make sure that our process is outlined accurately. We want to make sure that schools are implementing it accurately and appropriately. So we may have the greatest policies and procedures of the district on how we run the MTSS program, but if the principals and the MTSS leaders, the schools, aren't monitoring it and implementing it as written, we need to make sure that that's shored up. So that group will first of all look at what does a high quality MTSS program look like?
Okay.
And then evaluate ours as a district policy, is it, is it in line with that, is it high quality? And then audit, what are our schools doing in the process? What does an MTSS meeting look like? What are the words that are being used in that process so parents can understand what's happening? So they have a clear idea of the timeline, of the support, of how we work on ensuring that the students aren't falling through the cracks, how we ensure that they're not just lingering in MTSS for three years, that they're moving through the process in an appropriate way.
So for something like, these, these are the restrictions that we're, I'm most, you've heard me say this before, like communicating about how one qualifies for an MTSS, what counts, where the state has kind of restricted our hands and that person. And then are we looking at maybe how we communicate as that, as a district?
All that, yes, all that. Yep. And some of it will be built as the team comes together and as they identify areas that we need to work on as a team.
Very interested in how that goes.
Yeah. They'll be reporting out and once they set their agendas and meeting dates, and then they'll have some report out along the way, and then a final report to share with the board. Same with the dyslexia pile, uh, program, uh, task force and the teacher burnout task force.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. I will move on to my board chair comments. On Tuesday, August 23rd, the school board participated in a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats or SWAT analysis as the first step in the process towards developing a new strategic plan. The session was facilitated by the Georgia School Board Association, who complimented the board on our current book study of what school boards can do and how reading the book will support our work of developing a new strategic plan. As Dr. Furman mentioned last Tuesday, the district held the strategic plan community input session, which I also attended. It was great to see so many district stakeholders participate in the process, including parents, CSD staff, and even a few students. Thank you to everyone who came out and to the stakeholders who completed the survey. I also want to thank the Georgia School Board Association for their facilitation of the session as well as the survey. The board, Dr. Furman and staff look forward to reviewing the report the GSBA will compile based on the in-person session and survey feedback. Congratulations to DHS wide receiver, DVA student and Vanderbilt University commit, Kendrick Lanier, who was recently honored as a 2023 All-American during a virtual jersey presentation as part of the first week of the Road to the Dome digital series. Having been selected to play in the 23rd edition of the All-American Bowl, Kendrick will play in the annual East versus West matchup inside the Alamo Dome in San Antonio, Texas. The Bowl will be nationally televised live on NBC and Peacock and will feature the nation's top 100 high school football players. We are so proud of Kendrick, and I'm sure the fact that I taught him in seventh and eighth grade contributed to him being an All-American. On August 27th, the Decatur High School JROTC attended the SWAC versus MEAC challenge that featured Alabama State versus Howard in an HBCU football matchup. The event was sponsored by the K Command and the Big Army JROTC program. The event was much bigger than just a game as students participated in the Coca-Cola Fan Experience, Band Jamboree and Two Chainz Mini Concert. The night's highlight was students having the privilege to meet Brigadier General Daphne Davis. So excited to see our students participating in that, particularly as an HBCU grad. I want to remind everyone about the community engagement session that will be held tomorrow as part of the superintendent search process. The session will be held in the DHS cafeteria at 6 o'clock PM. If you cannot make that session, there will be a sec, second session held on September 28th, same time and same place. Congratulations to my former coworker, Dr. Charlie McAdoo, the business and communications teacher at Beacon Hill Middle School, who was featured in the September 2022 Techniques publication. Techniques is the premier, is the premium national publication for career and technical educators. Keep up the great work, Dr. McAdoo. Congrats to the 2022 National Recognition Program awardees. We're so proud of your academic achievements and the work you put in to get ready for college. The names of all of the Decatur awardees and their awards can be found in the boards, in the board newsletter, which will come out on Thursday. The National Recognition Programs Grant, underrepresented students, academic honors that can be included on the college and scholarship applications and connect students with universities across the country, helping them to stand out during the admissions process. Additionally, colleges and scholarship programs use these honors to identify students from underrepresented groups through college boards, through the College Board Student Search Service. So congratulations again to those students. Athletics and extracurricular activities are in full swing at DHS and Beacon Hill Middle School, and our talented students want to see the Decatur community cheering for them. If you're interested in attending a show, concert, match, game, et cetera, be sure to check the school websites for schedules. That concludes my chair's comment. We will now move on to the consent agenda items, which include personnel reports, school nutrition, monthly financial reports, and the career and technical education state and federal grants. May I have a motion to approve the consent items one through four?
I move to approve consent items one through four?
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda items one through four are approved. The board was provided the school improvement plans for all 10 schools as information. Moving on to action items, the board has several.
Good evening, Dr. Furman, would you like to add an item that's in front?
Uh, yes. Madam Chair, our first action item is to look at the school, oh, okay. So the first ones are the initial reviews. So the board was provided policies for initial review, including policies under school district operations, school board operations, fiscal management, business management, and facility expansion program. And there was a correction to the board packet, the, I didn't check something right inside, simply the, the, the non-updated version of the facility expansion, of the naming procedures were in there, but the new one has been added to the packet that is live on the agenda right now on our website. So if the board has any, some suggestions have been made to those, and that's part of what we provided in the policy primer, is just some overall information for the community to remind them what the processes that we're going through. And then at the bottom, there is a table that helps everyone understand, these are board policies that are being reviewed by the board for, with no changes being made based off of the draft that the GSBA attorneys have provided, minimal changes to the draft that they provided or significant changes. So at this time, if the board has any policies they would like to take a closer look at and discuss, based on that, we will go through those policies.
I did have the, the one question which we spoke about previously, Madam Superintendent, regarding whether, whether it is appropriate in the fiscal management policy to have a line where we say that if expenditure is appropriate for capital expense and qualifies for SLOPS, that would be the first bucket that we go to? Is that, is that, what, I guess, what's the process? Is that something that goes under review now?
Yeah, if that's something that you want to recommend changing, let me know the wording you'd like to put in the policy, and then we will send that to legal and back to GSBA for review and vetting.
And, and if possible, I would like to hear from, from Sergio as well about the perspective that, that, that people have, you know, if there's a reason why that's not appropriate, I think it would be helpful to know that.
Okay. So I'll review that and get some feedback board on that as well. But if you could send me the language that you want for that, so I make sure I get it right.
Sure.
Talking about the federal funds one, or is that in the fiscal management?
Fiscal management.
Because the same language appears in federal funds.
It would not be federal because that's quite tightly controlled. This is more if, I think there's a pareto for where we spend fund dollars. And I, I would like us to have as a policy, the general index to if it is a capital expense that qualifies for SLOPS, that is the first place that we look for those dollars as opposed to it hitting the tax digest and tax dollars.
Okay. We will work on that and get some feedback that we'll present next month when we have that one up for approval. There's no other comment on those. We are to the section where we would look at the four policies that were reviewed last month. The edits have been made, public comments reviewed and updated. So are there any questions or discussion on the policies that are up for approval at this time?
I think it probably bodes saying that we removed the language around unstructured break time to comport with the current policies. And so we will not be using recess as a lever for punishing or discipline. Just make that clear to the community.
So we're ready to go ahead? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the board policy development, unstructured break time, student attendance, and parents' bill of rights?
I move to approve those four?
May I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. So the policy development, unstructured break time, student attendance, and parent bill of rights policies are approved. All right.
Um, yes. So the next, the last item for the board approval tonight is calendar approval. So we were, we are delayed a little bit in getting these calendars out to the public because there was such a division within our community and this input we got from stakeholders on the calendar options that we put out there. So we wanted to do a little bit more time on our part and review those calendars and see if we could find a middle ground where we could come together. So the major updates in the calendars for 2023, 24, we are including an early release day once a month. It will be the last Wednesday of each month and every month except for May. We are going to include one digital learning day. That was one of the bigger divisive areas between the various stakeholder groups. One group was okay with digital learning days, another group was not. So we settled on one digital learning day for the year. It is election day, which is a day students normally would be at home not learning at all, but they will have asynchronous learning opportunities on that election day, and that will count as a school day. We also have dedicated two staff days to be full teacher work days. And the one is the last, we've added a workday before the start of holiday break. And then the, one of the pre-planning days will be a fully dedicated teacher work day. So we did want to make sure that there is clear communication to the community that as we do have these early release days embedded starting next year, that we will have enhanced opportunities, not just with the city after-school programs, but adding some additional opportunities for parents that aren't in those programs that need that after-school help before we would release students at their normal time. So want to know that those plans are in the works and we will be providing additional information. So if the board has any questions about the calendars?
Any questions?
Approve the 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 calendars.
I move to approve the 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 CSD calendars.
Thank you.
One second, Matt.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The school calendars for the 2023, 2024 school year and the 2024, 2025 school year are approved. We have future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, trainings, and retreats. Board members, are there any questions about the future dates for the work of the board? No? All right, hearing none. Thank you all for joining us this evening. The meeting is adjourned at 8:25 PM.
Oh, we need to assume that Tasha's not here.
Oh, and, yes, and I, and I failed to mention that board member, Tasha White, was not able to join us this evening in person or virtually.